Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the visions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Court of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known. The agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January 14th, 2022, via email. Copies of this notice has been placed in administrative building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 14th, 2022. Our mission statement: Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and the character to succeed in diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Solz.
Here.
Mr. Rich.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. LaRocca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Ms. Rigs.
Here.
Mr. Slanders.
Ms. Lizinski.
Here.
Here.
Please rise in black suit.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. This evening, I wanted to start off with the recognition of our staff members that have retired. I'm going to call off some of the names, but I would like the assistance of Madam President, Madam Vice President, as I call some of these names. I'm going to go to the podium, if you would mind joining me. We do have some who said that they would be here and some that indicated that they would not. I still want to read their names into the record and recognize them for their years of contribution. So I would like to start off with, probably it's not in any particular order, but in order as they are in the box, right? And some folks could not be here or indicated they would not be here. First name I would like to recognize is Ms. Roberta Buford, who was Director of Operations for 30 years. As you know, Ms. Buford was an iPhone, Asbury Park, from student to administrator, building principal, and the like. Ms. Gina Proctor with 19 years, was our secretary. Mr. Larry Daniels was a high school teacher for 27 years. Ms. Janice Paragot, if I mispronounce her name, please forgive me, blame my mind, not my heart, with 22 years. Margaret Ammendino with 30 years. Robert Boston, 35 years. Miki Mandev, 18 years. Pizzacotta, thank you. Did you think that way, okay? Ann Marie Graff, our supervisor, with 18 years. Christine Underwood with 29 years. Mr. John W. Washington, Constable, with 26 years. Come on up. Come on up. Right down. So what we have for you is a certificate and a plaque. Okay, you can stand right up here. You might have some other retirees with you, so you might be setting for a little bit, but you know, we need to get you a chair, you know? Let's let me know. All right. Michelle James, 26 years. Christopher Fletcher, 29 years. Teacher, tech coach. Delsey Stewart-Chance, 28 years. Come on down. You're the next contestant. Come on, get that certificate. Don't wait on the long clock. There you go. There's your certificate and your... Last name? Miss name, if you want to. 18 years. We have people that is 18 in this district.
Yeah, it's 33 years old. I'm 10 years old.
Okay. Well, thank you for corrections. But you've got to list here's your certificate and your plaque. Okay, you can stand right next to those. All right? Make sure the certificate's got you right. All right, that's all that matters. All right, that's all that matters. Our letters can be wrong. Make sure the certificate's got you correct. Okay? Because trust me, if it started three, make sure they got you in the system. All right? Ms. Lisa Spiegel, 25 years. James Kellahart, 22 years. Again, teacher. Bertha Swobod, 27 years. Ms. Mary Fignano, nurse, 70 years. So, Ms. Swobod, can you go? Come through, can you get your certificate and your plaque? Thank you. Um, we said Mary Fignano, nurse. We have Ms. Kathy Baumgartner, Principal, 19 years. Who am I going to say? Who am I going to have this certificate? All right, there's your... There's... Right there. Ms. Shannon Grayson, teacher, 25 years. And Laura Babilo, teacher, 22 years. So retirees on those who were on the list and those who came in person. On behalf of all of your colleagues, past and present, whether they mentored you and they retired before you, to all of the students that you served, serviced, taught, supported, enabled, encouraged, who are not here, we thank you. On behalf of this community, you've seen the drastic changes. You've seen the ebbs and flows. But we were here, for some of you, over a quarter or more of a century. That's not including the countless hours that you did double time, parent-teacher conferences, prepared report cards, wrote lesson plans, stayed after and consoled, wiped tears, wiped snot, wiped blood, did the whole thing. Cleaned, prepared. All of those things, there are no words that can say how much we appreciate what you've done and the lives that you've touched. You have made a difference in everyone who you've come in contact with now and those in the future. And I just want to say thank you. As the superintendent, your work, your service, your time is well appreciated and loved. God bless, good luck, and know that you move into the next phase of your life continuing the dedication that you have provided here in this community. So thank you. No alarm clock. You got the video, Ms. Solz? Oh, you got the video.
I got the video.
So, I'll make up about working out. Again, like I said, if you guys... Okay, we appreciate that. I made that? No. Madam President, that concludes my public presentation.
Before we open up public participation, we're going to have a comment from our lawyer, Adam.
In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Court of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational matters and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the President and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation, if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you, Adam. At this time, I'll open up public participation.
Good evening, ladies and general of board. My name is Bill Macklin. I'm a somewhat new resident here, having moved to Asbury about four years ago. This is my second meeting. Have a little familiarity with the business.
I'm sorry, John, can you adjust his mic, please?
Can you hear me?
He's got you. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Bill Macklin. I'm a newer resident here, having moved here four years ago, and this is my second board meeting. I have some experience with the business. And let me add, first of all, my congratulations to the teaching staff who are retiring for a job. Certainly well done, and appreciate the recognition that the board has made of them. If I may be so bold, please don't misinterpret my commentary tonight, but there are a couple of things I wanted that I was responding to, listening to Dr. Adams and his comments. Quality of information starts with you. You as a board, your concern with public information, misunderstandings, they're damaging to a school district. But the information begins here, so the more you provide accurate information, the less you're faced with a lot of misinterpretation and wasted time battling unnecessary issues. First of all, let me suggest that you put up your identification at a kind of heading on this document so that these 90-year-old eyes really can see the names and the placards that are in front of you. And I'm sure that's true for most of the residents that are seated back here. I think it'd just be helpful if you identified the board officers and board members so that people, newbies like myself, would understand what's going on and who is speaking and what their job and assignments are in this important activity. As I look through your agenda, there are some things I wonder why you don't attach. For example, you approved a calendar here or are going to approve a calendar. Why can't that be attached to the agenda? I would look at the agenda as one place you can cut down a lot of misinformation by including that there. And a question I had was, you rescinded an appointment. I don't... I'm not trying to get into any personnel matters, but why rescind the appointment? There's no indication. Was it clerical error or just an overlooked mistake or something of that sort? That would help. I mean, unless there's some personnel issue behind it. And your approval, your approval of the Performance Excellence Group, Excellence Group. Now, I know it's not a big expenditure, given the millions you're responsible for, but you're spending $43,000 for staff enrichment of some sort. It deserves, I think, in my opinion, a few more words of explanation. What are they going to do? How do they affect the staff? You know, why, basically, are you employing them? And I think that kind of information helps to cut down some of the misinformation that you're getting. In any case, I'm delighted to be able to be here and observe you in action. I wish you a very fine, successful school year. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to be long. I don't even need three minutes. I just wanted to take this time and say thank you. Don't do that. Um, no. 19 years. This relationship has been like a marriage. You know, you have your good days, you have your bad days. And when you have the bad days, you don't want to stay married. So I've had those days where I got up in the morning and said, "Do I really want to go back there?" But I came back, obviously, for 19 years. And I'm grateful. I'm grateful for everything that I received from this 19 years. The relationships that I've built, the students and some staff who have become family. This has been life-changing. So it took about two minutes, a minute. I just want to say thank you. And thank you for recognizing. Ms. Buford is not here. I spoke to her yesterday. She said she was coming, but I knew she wasn't. I knew she wasn't. But she's grateful as well. You know, she has her way. But she is. She's grateful as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Besides being a little determined to be cheated out of six years, I just want to say that the best part of my 23 years in Asbury Park was the children. We don't give the children of Asbury Park enough of credit. Their common sense, things that they go through at home and they come into school with, and they're still able to put in a full day. I have absolute positive respect for every child in Asbury Park. And I don't care what those test scores say. Our children are very, very smart. When I was a little girl, they told my parents I wouldn't get past the first grade. I now have my doctorate. Those test scores mean nothing. What is important is to get the passion of the children, have them set their goal. And the only way that they can fail is by quitting. I was in the middle of my master's degree, and I asked one professor if she thought I was intelligent enough to go for my doctorate. And she said, "It has nothing to do with intelligence, Vicki, and has all to do with your passion." And that's what the Asbury Park children need, is the passion. They're smart. More important, they have common sense, and they know how to get along in the world. The best part of my 23 years was looking at these children and seeing what they are capable of. And they're capable of whatever they think they are because they are smart. And I don't care what those test scores say. Thank you.
Kathy, before you leave, I would just like to thank you on behalf of the state. I've had almost every job in education at one time or another. I'm not sure what that says, but... And I have to say to you with all due respect that I think the hardest job of all, and I'm... No offense, but I was a superintendent for 27 years, is being a high school principal today. It is absolutely one of the most challenging and difficult jobs anyone could ever have. And until you have that job, you never understand what the staff and the administration of a high school today in the United States is all about. So I want you to know that although at times we haven't always agreed, there were other times we have, I've always respected the job that you've done. You've done it well. You've earned the praise and respect of your colleagues and certainly the students whose lives you've touched. Thank you.
At this time, I close public participation.
Superintendent Report. This past Monday, we provided the county superintendent, Dr. Richards, with a five-year plan. We'll await his review of that. We'll have that ready to be presented to the board at the next board meeting or within my weekly updates. We have a scheduled meeting on the 8th, so we'll be able to finalize and provide the final five-year plan that will include everything from fiscal to academics to supports to every aspect of our district. And we'll look to make sure that the board has that information. It is, as I would say, fluid. It is and will be a document that is not necessarily upon board approval, but it would be for informational purposes. That concludes my report along with the presentations.
Just that I also have been working with Dr. Adams and Mr. Hastings and all the others that have been working on this five-year plan with Dr. Richards. As Dr. Adams indicated, it will eventually be shared with everyone. And it's been quite an endeavor, so I'd like to thank everybody that's been working on it. And also, I will be attending with Mr. Hastings the meeting on stabilization aid and coming back with a recommendation that supports his to the board about the application. Thank you.
I do want to take this moment to recognize the directors and our VA who worked extensively on combing through some very hard, longstanding information in order to put this together, to make it as comprehensive as possible, to make it as forward-thinking as possible. And so all of the directors played a critical role in putting this five-year plan together. And it would not be without their individual expertise and information that will allow us to put such a comprehensive a plan together.
Thank you. Have a question. I'm not sure I understand what the board role is as we've kind of discussed potential retreat on some big policy issues. Are those covered in the budget plan? Or we deal with those after the budget plan? Or let me just leave it as I'm not sure what the board function is here, if I can get.
With respect to the five-year plan?
Yes. With... Well, we were morphing toward having a retreat on... Ms. Lizinski mentioned on the five-year plan. I was thinking we're just doing it more on bigger policy questions about facilities. So now I'm not sure what the board role is on what...
I think those are two separate entities. In terms of the five-year plan, it's more or less from my role as the superintendent in terms of how we would function and operate given the limitation of funds and/or making programmatic decisions and the like. Again, like I do weekly, I give you weekly updates. That would be more or less for informational purposes. I think what Madam Vice President is referring to is the overall policy and execution of those policies related to the functionality of the board and how it would relate to my role as a superintendent in those policy and planning decisions for you all. If I'm mistaken, Madam Vice President, please, you know, write...
I think that the board needs to talk about what their vision is and how they, as an organization and group, are going to approach everything, including, you know, as an organization and group, are going to approach everything, including whether what the facilities, the finances, your plan, you know. It's something that we really need to talk about because you all have, you need to be focused on what tomorrow brings, you know, and what the next year brings, and understand how all these things work backwards. With every decision you make today, it changes a decision tomorrow. And I think everybody needs an understanding of where the district is going and the hurdles it has to overcome, and so that we all know what's going to happen in the future, how things are going to be addressed, you know, the problems that can come up. That's, you know, just to get together and really have a discussion about this. Because I think that one board member might have an idea about doing one thing but not seeing what the overall impact is going to have five years down the road. I think everybody has to look ahead to get an idea of what we're doing today. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all in agreement with the board retreat and kind of consolidating everything together in terms of our ideas and being focused. I'm just confused as to, we're going to talk about it afterwards and try to schedule one, right? But is it going to add, I guess it's like a chicken or the egg thing, is the five-year plan going to add context to what we're talking about, what we're going to talk about at the retreat, or vice versa?
Oh, sure, it'll add context. Yeah, sure. It's information. It's some things.
Okay. And we don't know when the five-year plan is going to be kind of released to us?
Once I get it back from Dr. Richens, and then we have our meeting with him. And if there's any related information from those who sit on a higher perch than he does. And then at that point, we'll be able to move accordingly with some of the academic decisions that I will have with the various directors and how that impacts us as a district. So again, it will be more or less information, but it will add context and content to maybe some of the policies and the governance of the board.
Okay. Thanks.
Have a motion for the items nine and 10 on A2.
Move it.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain from nine... I abstain from nine A and yes on everything else.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Madam President, I would ask for a consent agenda for all items on B1...
Dr. Adams, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to do the calendar separately, or do we just... Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Ask for consent agenda for all items on B1 through the addenda on B8.
We have a motion.
I'll move it.
I just have a quick, like, little question about the calendar. Is it, when do we usually know when graduation is? I don't see it on the calendar.
High school graduation is normally the last day of school.
Okay, so it would be, my eyes are horrible, June 22nd?
Yes, and/or if we have to make adjustments for snow days. So I would not say a hard date, but as of that calendar, it says June 22nd, so we will go with that unless, you know, as in the past, we have, again, made adjustments to the calendar. But with Robert Hughes' order, there's a motion on the floor, it's been probably first and second, right?
It has not been moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for a consent agenda, B1 through B8. I need someone to move it. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Someone to second?
Second.
Ms. Ricks, thank you. Seeing none, this is for all items, B1 to B8. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, but I abstain.
Yes, but I am saying anything that have to do with awards.
Thank you. Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
And Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Thank you. All items carried.
If I may, with regard to the resolution to authorize Mr. Lattaraca, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Lizinski to appear and speak on behalf of the board at the Homeowners Association, I recommend that at this time someone make a motion for such authorization.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mr. Lattaraca, myself, and Mr. Grillo to be official representation for the board at the next Homeowners Association, which tentatively is this month of August. Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Roll call. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
So we're at the open-plug-in meeting at the last conclusion for discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below. Whereas the Asbury Park Education was to discuss such matters made or will make such discussions public when proper conclusion has been reached. Now, therefore, by resolve that the January, July 28, 2022, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken.
If someone could just hang on a minute before making a motion in a second.
Oh, so sorry.
So we'll table that motion for just a moment because we're going to talk about Mr. Hastings' section of the agenda, C-section.
Sorry. So sorry.
There's nothing to be sorry for. We're just going to table that. You'll just renew your motion as soon as we're done with the other one.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Could I have a motion for all items, C1 number one to C3 number four?
Move it.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Mr. Grillo?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I have a question I want to clear with our attorney involved in the number two. C3, number two.
I believe that's something we need to discuss in closed.
Yeah, to the extent that there's a motion on the floor, there's a question about the motion, I'll walk over to you, Ms. Ricks, right now, just so that you can ask me and I can answer it so that we can continue with the vote.
Yes, all other items?
I mean, if I need to rescind my abstention and make it more...
Well, we have, we're already kind of beyond that right now because there's already been, we're in a roll call vote situation. So we have to finish with the vote.
So, Ms. Ricks, I have you, yes, on all items except abstaining, C3 number two.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Can we adopt a, can we invoke a doctrine of necessity for that? For the items that need to be...
So here's what we can do. Someone can make that motion, again, to approve just that item, and perhaps the votes will turn out a little differently and kind of see where it goes.
Make a motion to approve C3-2?
Specifically, C3-2 is a settlement agreement between the Asbury Park Education Association and the Board of Education with regard to a grievance, just for those folks who are following along both at home and in studio.
Thank you. This is for C3 number two. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Ms. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain.
And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
And, Madam President, you're going to renew your motion that you previously made with regard to executive session?
I'm going to renew my motion to go into exec. The litigation contract matters and the personnel matters.
I'll move it. Someone second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So for the members of the public who are here and those who are watching at home, the board is going to retire to executive session to discuss confidential matters. The board will not be taking any action inside executive session. At the end of the executive session meeting, the board will return to this room, and it's anticipated that action will be taken at that time. It's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 20 to 40 minutes. Thank you.
Ms. Halls? Is there a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion to deny both grievances as discussed in executive session.
This is to deny both grievances that were exact. And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
And Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.